Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of America.
Mr. McCoslin, please call the roll.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janasek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo. Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen, eight members present.
Thank you very much. Tonight, on the first agenda item is a presentation to Mr. Jason Turca as a finalist for the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Walsh.
Thank you. So it was my distinct pleasure to join Mr. Turk and Hershey last week as the 12 finalists from across Pennsylvania gathered to celebrate education, celebrate great teaching. They were able to present to other teachers some of their work and share their skills and so forth. And then at the sort of the climax of the week was the announcement of the Teacher of the Year. Mr. Turk was one of 12 of the finalists that were there and we're so honored that he's an outstanding math teacher for us at Independence Middle School. I'm glad he's here tonight and I'd love for the board to honor his achievements as a finalist for Teacher of the Year. And we gather, Mr. Turk, from what I was told, this is a lifelong commitment now that you're forevermore having to appear and speak and present and be a representative of that organization for all future events. So it's great that you're going to be representing Bethel Park in that way.
Thank you.
Two minutes has started.
I'll keep it super, super brief. A ton of thank yous, too many to list here and because no one does this alone. And there's so many people working hard at our school and at every school that the person that did win and all 12 of us, we're just a representative of everyone. I want to tell one quick story for the board. I love stories. It's a story from a really famous speaker, Simon Sinek, and he talked about going to Vegas and staying at a hotel, The Four Seasons. At The Four Seasons, he felt like everyone that said hi to him really meant it. They weren't just told that they had to. And he especially liked this one barista, Noah. There's a coffee shop in the lobby at The Four Seasons, and Noah was excellent, friendly, engaging. He went back to get coffee a few times when he didn't even want it. And he tipped him a lot, which is not typical for Simon. Being the person that he is, organizational leadership speaker, he asked him, do you love your job? What do you love about it? He said, I just love my job. I love working here. But I also work at Caesar's. And at Caesar's, I feel like the managers are watching me. I feel like they're waiting for me to do something wrong to correct it. But here at The Four Seasons, I feel like the managers, even not in my department, they ask me if I need anything to help me do my job better, and they mean it. And I really feel like working here is like working at The Four Seasons. I feel like many of you administrators and board members take a lot of flack, maybe feel unappreciated at times. But thank you so much for fostering an environment where we can feel like doors are open for us to pursue our best, the best that we can. And I really appreciate all of you. I hope that you all make good decisions. I hope that you all are able to come to consensus on many issues. And thanks so much for everything that you do for, as Mr. Walsh says all the time, making us best in class. Thank you. On my way to IMS concert. So have a great night, everyone.
Enjoy it.
Enjoy it.
You know, it's also was fortuitous that we were here that night to celebrate with Mr. Turk because Bethel Park High School was also recognized during that celebration for having earned the blue ribbon. So while last month we had Mr. Valani here to receive the and share with the board that blue ribbon honor, I brought it tonight from the Department of Education. So I'm able to present to Mr. Valani from the Pennsylvania Department of Education this recognition for one of the few schools in Pennsylvania to have earned that honor of a blue ribbon. And I'm glad you're here so I can present this to you.
Congratulations to Mr. Turk and Mr. Valani and the high school and administration. Great honors for both. Next up is attend to adopt agenda items.
We'll need a motion.
I need a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Janasek, seconded by Mr. McGregor.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Facilities and Service Committee meeting on November 8th, 2022, and the Combined Regular Committee meeting on November 15th, 2022.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mrs. Janasek.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
The next is the announcement of executive session on December 6th, 2022 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And just for those in the public and out there on the agenda, there was no executive session tonight. Next up on the agenda is the Student Government Report.
Which is online on the board docs. Their written report was provided for the board. Neither of them could make it here this night to present it in person.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is PTO/PTA. I think Mrs. Hughes is online.
Yes. Hi, my name is Dawn Hughes, and I am co-president of the PTO Council. First up, we have Abraham Lincoln Elementary. Lincoln was excited to start off the holiday season by collecting over 100 new toys for the Toys for Tots drive this year. They also collected new pajamas for the Scholastic Pajama Drive. Thank you to all the Lincoln families who donated. They just wrapped up another successful Snowball Express shopping event, and their Cookies with Santa event has finally returned. Both had a great turnout, and they are super thankful to everyone who volunteered for the events and helped to celebrate the holidays together. Over at Ben Franklin Elementary, each month, the PTO has had one Spirit Week at school for the kids to dress up in matching themes. Most of them just love these days and look forward to the next one. They also have their annual Cookies with Santa and holiday shop at the school. Both of these events went over better this year than they have in the past. Over at George Washington Elementary, Cookies with Santa was on December 9th. The event included a photo booth, movie, tattoo artist, mini crafts, games, storytime, prize drawings, holiday characters, and of course, Santa himself. Donations for a shoe drive and a local toy drive were collected. The PTO has purchased classroom gifts based on teacher suggestions and will be passed out during the holiday parties. Over at Memorial Elementary, they will be hosting a light-up night on December 17th. All students will be giving a luminary kit to decorate and place outside their home to light at 6:00 PM. School staff will also be given a luminary kit to decorate, which will be placed at the school. Be sure to drive past Memorial School between 6:00 and 7:00 on December 17th to see the school beautifully lit and wave to the Memorial Santa Claus. They are also keeping in the holiday spirit with the 12 Days Until Winter Break countdown, which includes special dress-up days like Holiday Hats or Grinch Day. Over at William Penn Elementary, William Penn had a quieter month of November. They had an amazing Spirit Night fundraiser that packed the restaurant. They were also able to express thankfulness for the staff with mini pies before Thanksgiving. Over at Neil Armstrong Middle School, Neil Armstrong PTO is just wrapping up Santa shop this week and helping to prepare for their holiday charity carnival, thanks to the amazing families who volunteer their time to make all this possible. And lastly, Independence Middle School, the IMS PTSO is thankful for all who helped make the annual holiday craft show a success. Special thanks goes to the custodial staff and Officer Pop. On behalf of all the schools, we would like to wish everyone happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor report.
Ms. Turnbull will not be here this evening, so I'm here in her place, from Rebecca Hall. I generally work with the very talented student support and special education team with Dr. Bench and Dr. Shue. We've had a great year, and I just want to thank everyone for letting us continue to work in your district.
Thank you. Committee reports. Next up, superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to start with a shout-out. I have in front of me here a printed copy of an article that was published this fall in the PA Administrator Magazine entitled "Making Space for Modern Learning." And the author sitting right here in our room, ready to sign autographs, would be Dr. Jen Sannie, Mrs. Figglioli, and Mr. Slezak. So congratulations to our... That's the PA Administrator Magazine. Next item is give the board an update on our strategic plan. As we do each month, we take one new or one repeated section of the strategic plan to review. You have a printed copy of the DEI pages of the Balance Score Card. This document is available on our website and is real-time updated. For this month's Strategic Planning Progress Report, I'm going to focus on the three diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. These goals are symbiotic with and as necessary as the student experience goals I described last month. I'm pleased to report we've made some progress on the DEI goals and related action steps. As I said last month, we are introducing universal design for learning to our teachers so that UDL can be infused into the very fabric of our curriculum and instruction. UDL also features prominently in our DEI goals. It's a powerful influence on culture. It really challenges the teacher to think differently about planning, instruction, in ways that each and every student can find a pathway forward. This aligns perfectly with the spirit of belonging we want to foster in our schools with these DEI goals. We want all students to feel connected, respected, and valued. We desire all our students to find a niche, a feeling of belonging that comes from good friends, engaging experiences, and feelings of respect from all they encounter. This kind of culture takes time to steep. It also requires all adults in any way connected to our schools to emote patience, understanding, and encouragement each and every day toward each and every individual who crosses our threshold in order for the culture to truly foster belonging. To that end, we have as many supports and checks in place to ensure no one is neglected academically, emotionally, or socially, and everyone feels like they belong in our schools. Toward this core of the strategic planning goal, we have truly marshaled our student assistance resources for the varying needs and experiences of our students. We have completed some staff development on UDL, inclusion, and belonging, with more on the way. While we're pleased with this progress, it's worth saying again that these goals are seismic shifts in our culture. This takes time to accomplish, and it takes even more time for it to produce the long-term growth and belonging we seek. I enclose by inviting everyone who hears this to lock arms with us, to surround our students with support and encouragement, to resist the mighty influences of social media and popular culture that glorify unattainable goals and marginalize individuality, to celebrate the inherent worth and dignity of our students, and embrace the uniqueness and opportunity a diverse and inclusive community offers. You'll see on the printed update color coding by some of the progress we've made and some of the areas that still have yet to be addressed over the next three and a half years of our strategic plan. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Cromie, who will share with us his five big things.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. As always, there are more than five wonderful things happening in Bethel Park. And one of the great things, true things that makes it a privilege to work at Bethel Park is you get to choose. You don't have to manufacture five things. So we'll start first with, on January 6th, Bethel Park will host Electrify Your Strings. Bethel Park has hosted this in the past, but it's been several years now. And student musicians will light up the auditorium with some classic rock songs with a classical twist, and the 2023 Electrify Your Strings concert at 7:00 PM on Friday, January 6th. Tickets are $5 in advance and $8 at the door for the general admission show. To secure your seats in advance, please contact Strings teacher Stephanie Glover via email at glover.stefanie@bphawks.org. Electric cellist Greg Byers will lead the student musicians in the performance, featuring selections from bands like The Beatles, Led Zeppelin, Guns N' Roses, Rush, and more. And I can tell you from talking to people that have been to it in the past, that have nothing to do with Bethel Park, they're very excited to hear that we're having it. So that's always exciting. Our second big thing, on Friday, in a ceremony held in the Bethel Park High School cafeteria and later at halftime of the Hawks-Boys basketball game versus Cannon McMillan, six alumni were inducted into the Bethel Park Athletic Hall of Fame. The inductees included Glenn Nordstrom and his son Carl, Eric Morrison, Kelly Schmidt, and Megan Marisic. James Moore, who founded the boys' basketball team and the football program, was also posthumously honored with a distinguished contribution award. By the way, Glenn Nordstrom and Carl are, Glenn was the father, Carl is the brother of Pam Dobus, a former school board member, and they are just the second father-son duo inducted into the Bethel Park Athletic Hall of Fame. Next up is just something that's happening every day in our classes. Students in Mrs. Megan Farren's Anatomy and Physiology class at Bethel Park High School recently dissected sheep eyeballs as part of a comparative anatomy unit, in which students compare the structure and functionality of a sheep's eyeball and compare it to that of a human's eyeball. The students have also dissected a sheep's brain and to study its central nervous system and how it impacts it, and they will soon be dissecting sheep's hearts. They were very engaged. It was a wonderful lesson, and it's a good example of some of the applied learning that's happening inside our classrooms. Also, as many of you know, the initial phase of the renovation of IMS has completed. It's drawing to a close. The results have already been spectacular. One addition, the new elevator near the gym, which will serve all three floors, will be completed during the holiday break. Some classes have temporarily moved into the new rooms on the first floor while Phase 2 kicks off upstairs. Those renovations will completely remake the special area classrooms, the kitchen and cafeteria, the upstairs classrooms, and they will replace the ramp on the first and second floor with a stair tower. If you haven't been there, it's really beautiful. IMS looks, so far, the renovations have just been gorgeous. And last, this is kind of interesting. This kind of came across my thing from an alum, a proud alum. TJ Cornwell, who goes by the stage name Teed, she's an '05 alum, and he's released a new single in time for the holidays called Millennial Gideon. It's a stripped-down piano performance. His debut single, Twilight, racked up more than 3.4 million views on TikTok, which is an enormous number. He said he tries to create a blend of vulnerable lyrics with piano-forward synth-laced pop. And also, there's another artist from the '06 class named Steve Mokler, who's a country artist, and he is also rising through that world. So it's kind of interesting to have two music stars coming up through Bethel Park, yet another example of our very strong music department. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. And we'll turn the mic now to our curriculum coordinators for their bright spots, knowing that they just spent quite a considerable amount of time in the Curriculum Committee meeting with the board, giving you updates on last year's progress and overall achievement numbers. This will be the bright spots of the last month.
Hello again. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the STEAM experiences that students are having in the K-5 elementary level. We're fortunate to be able to borrow robotics tools from the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. They have something that's called a lending library. So we were able to receive a kit in the fall, and then I seek out teachers who are interested in trying new things in their classroom. It's kind of like a try-before-you-buy type of experience, starting to articulate some of the experiences that students will have in the new elementary school in that K-5 sequence of the STEAM courses. And so I had some people using the materials, and I wanted to share some of the amazing things that are happening in their classrooms. Our elementary librarians are continuing to do the STEAM storytime this year. Ms. Heasley, who was at IMS last year and is at William Penn this year, just such a masterful facilitator, such a joy to watch her work. And she invited Dr. Walsh and I to come in and watch the robot parade. So students read a book called Balloons Over Broadway, which teaches kids about the Macy's Parade. And then they used something that's called a B-bot to host their own Thanksgiving parade. So here's an example of a float on the left. In quoting Mrs. Heasley, she said, "Some kids thrive in the E, some kids thrive in the A, whereas you have some kids, like you see on the right, the coding. They want to make sure the coding is just so." Then you have your A kids, the artists, who, more feathers, more glitter, more color. But I just really love that comparison that she made. And you can see the code there that the students were using. The B-bot is a low-floor, very easy tool to access for a young user, and essentially, you code the B-bot in how he's going to move, how many steps forward, to the side, backward. There were some turning around in the parade. There were a lot of oohs and ahs as they performed their parade for the kindergarten class. So a big shout-out to Mrs. Heasley for thriving in her new position for this year. Another one of our STEAM pioneers is Ms. Huth, Laura Huth, who runs our camp invention every summer. She was at NAMM's last year. This year, she's in first grade, and she wanted to try, they're, together, they're called Dash and Dot, but we only received Dash. So you're looking at Dash, he's the four blue balls. Dot is a Lone Ranger. He's by himself, but she used Dash. And the students were learning some block coding when experimenting with Dash. So he learned how to navigate roads. This is them just kind of learning some of the basic navigation tools in the block coding. And this is Dash navigating through their roads they made out of toilet paper and paper towels rolls, and also him coding the xylophone for him to play some music. So a big shout-out to Mrs. Huth for fearlessly taking on the Dash robots. Another fearless STEAM pioneer is Ms. Sappis, who's a kindergarten teacher at William Penn. And she asked, when I told people that we had the lending library, if she could try the Osmos. So here you can see her students using the Osmo Tangram set to explore basic shapes and exercise their spatial and visual problem-solving skills. The Osmo has a lot of opportunities. What's nice about the Osmo is it works with any tablet, an iPad, a Kindle. It's got that base at the bottom, and then that top piece is a reflective mirror that when it projects onto the table, it makes, it's an augmented reality experience, where what is happening on the table is captured on the screen. It can be used with number tiles, letter tiles, lot of opportunities with the Osmo. And she, if you've ever seen kindergartners even try to log into their accounts, this can be a challenging feat. And so big shout-out to Ms. Sappis to just diving right in and taking those tubs of Osmos to use with her students. Also want to give a shout-out to Mr. Lidle. His class is the fifth-grade tech ed class, and that is a nine-week rotation in the Unified Arts rotation. So that means every student gets this nine-week experience in his class. This is the first year that he has begun using the Lego Spike Kits. So essentially, the students, they build that robotic, they build that robotic vehicle, and then they code it using Scratch, which is another block-based programming, to make the vehicle move. Also a big shout-out to Mr. Slezak for assisting in getting those off the ground and troubleshooting some of the quirks with that new technology. Something that we're really excited about that was purchased pre-COVID, the district had some funding, and they purchased what are called SAM Labs. So all of the elementary libraries already possess these SAM Lab Maker Kits. And these are fantastic. They're drag-and-drop block-based coding program and language, so those can be used from K to 5. And we're going to train, the elementary librarians had not had in-person training due to COVID. So we have a trainer coming out on January 17th to work with them. They do have a brick adapter, so students can put Lego creations on to the other creations that they make. And what's really, really nice about these that I think are going to be advantageous for us in the long run is that they have a vast curriculum that is aligned to the next-generation science standards, which is what the PA science standards are based on. So there are several units for each grade level that integrate the technology into the science lessons. So excited to get our librarians, who have been our STEAM pioneers for us, get them fluent with this tool, and then we can kind of start pushing those out of the classrooms as well and start seeing them integrated into some of the content areas.
So this evening, I have the opportunity to talk a little bit about the LUMA Institute training that Mrs. Figglioli and I participated in last week. You approved this?
You approved this for us last month to attend this training. And so what the LUMA Institute does is it looks at human-centered design methods, and it defines human-centered design as the discipline of developing solutions in the service of people, and that you start with the people always. And so they look at this process through the lens of looking, observing the human experience, understanding, and then making. And they have sort of structured this process. And they are very quick to say that LUMA did not create all of these methods, but that they did source them and pull them together. And so then the training was us practicing some of these methods and which methods to put together in order to facilitate a discussion for an outcome, not a preconceived outcome, but an outcome that the group comes together based on discussions and multiple perspectives. And so they compare it to your pantry. You have a variety of items in your pantry, and you could pull two items one day and make something with them, and then you could pull the same two items the next day, but add a third and make a totally different kind of meal. And so when they start putting these methods together and they divide them into what they call neighborhoods, and they sort of categorize them so you can think through what kind of experience you want the group that you are working with to have, they start to call these recipes. And this recipe here is using two different methods. One is called Rosethorn Bud, and another is called Alternative Worlds. And this recipe is actually one to run a better staff meeting. And so in this recipe, what they say is that you should have your staff start off by listing a rose, something positive from your previous week or previous month, a thorn, something that maybe didn't go so well, and a bud. What is an opportunity that with a group together, we could maybe really capitalize on? And then they said to make sure that once in every staff meeting, that Alternative Worlds, this is where we look at a different perspective, have someone con- this is where we look at a different perspective, have someone comment on whatever the topic is, from a perspective that maybe isn't one that we are really familiar with or something that we would immediately think of. And so it's really important to bring those different perspectives into these conversations so that we're sure that we're really focusing on that human. A LUMA-certified practitioner uses human-certified, I'm sorry, centered design methods, activities, and techniques in their work on a daily basis. So Mrs. Figlioli actually had a meeting the other day where she started utilizing these practices. We are very thankful for Amazon. We have ordered our Post-it notes and our Sharpies and all the materials that we need to move forward with some of our January 17th in-service so that we can start utilizing these methods. We speak a common language for creative problem solving that leads to faster, better collaboration. Mr. Slezak, I know, is also a partner. He is LUMA-certified, and so he's going to be a great asset to helping Mandy and I have this become very common for us to utilize, and knows when and how to apply the combinations of human-centered design methods to the common challenges. So again, those recipes. And the key behaviors of an innovative practitioner are that they are visual, it's not about words, sometimes it's just sketches, it's just little pictures, imaginative, remove the limits of today. You really have to think for the future, not for right now, rate this moment. Empathetic, talking, it really helps you look at bigger solutions that benefit all of the humans. Questioning, it is really important to determine, are we even answering and working on the right problem? Is what we brought to the table really the crux of the issue? Is that really what we should be working on? And that's a team effort. Collaborative, again, you need diverse perspectives. And iterative, iterative, you need to go round and round and round, keep asking, keep working, and working through that, and making sure that you're open to new conversation. And so with that, we thank you for your attention this evening.
That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Public comments on agenda items from audience and members. I'm going to move on to business items. Mr. Scalzo, Curriculum Committee.
We have two items. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the revision to the 2022-2023 Bethel Park High School Clubs and Activities Handbook. Number two, Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to permit qualifying high school students and their chaperones, determined based on the number of qualifying students, to participate in the following competition. Pennsylvania DECA Career Development Conference, Hershey, PA, February 22 through 24, 2023, and International Youth Leadership Summit, the Impact of Water on Society, Iceland and Berlin, Germany, July 4th through the 15th, 2024. I would like to move items one and two.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Ms. Janasek. Mr. Valani, or Dr. Walsh, do you want to speak to either of those?
Sure, I can start. So number one, there were some new clubs that had been requested. Under the operation procedures, students can request a club for a year's probational experience. So there's an addition to the handbook that would add these new clubs for this year. Item two on the motion are two trips. Of course, the DECA competition trip coming up in February, and we're always so proud of our DECA students who move through regionals to states, and even this year, we got a group that's aiming all the way to nationals, and we know they'll do well. Item B is a new experience. We're going to try and launch here for Bethel Park students. The board's aware that I participated in the Youth Leadership Summit this past summer as a judge of that STEAM experience competition, and passed it off to a high school staff member to recruit students to participate in the 2024's Youth Leadership Summit, which gives students ample time, 18 months really, to start fundraising and paying their way to participate in the competition. And couch it with a magnificent trip. You can see from the agenda, magnificent trip of Iceland as part of the experience. It'll be nothing like they've ever experienced before.
With the activity handbook, we just did some updates in there from last year's approval. We updated some sponsors, some of the provisional clubs that are coming this year. You know, we've created that new process for a three-year provisional period where student-led or generated clubs can kind of facilitate under a teacher or a staff member at the school. So some of those clubs right now is a reformed environmental club, a physics club, and they're looking to do an intramural sports club where they can bring back a ski trip or offer some other intramural sports following after school a couple times a month for students that might want to be involved in different, you know, they can participate in other sports activities during their seasons or competitions or other events. So typically, we bring those forward all in May for formal approval, but we did have quite a few that brought interest up in forming those activities. So we're looking to put those forward with a provisional approval and continue to monitor them in the continuation of those clubs.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please open the vote.
Voting is open.
Yes, I'm not getting anything.
Motion carries.
Next up on the agenda is Personnel Committee, Mr. McGregor.
Okay, under Personnel, there are five items. I'll read those. Approval of extra-duty responsibility program, 2022-23. Number two, acceptance of resignations. Number three, appointment of personnel. Number four, approval of unpaid leave of absence. And number five, approval of professional tuition reimbursement. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, I move one through five.
I need a second before we can discuss anyway.
Second.
Second.
Move by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Grzebek. I know, he's a little short, he's a little slimmer than I am. I only have one question. I'm going to guess the boys varsity football coach is going to go through the same process, I don't know who wants to answer that, as the basketball coach did last year.
You're talking about the interview hiring process? Yes, yes. I mean, we, of course, by contract, open up to internal candidates, teachers. Following that, it's open to the wider area, advertise publicly, gather all that, and then we begin a screening process, interview process, ultimately leading to a recommendation for the board. Probably have that at the January meeting.
Okay, that was just more for public, so everybody knew how that process works. There are several coaches that are outside some of that.
If I can mention, it's actually posted right now on our website under the employment tab, so please visit it.
There's your public service announcement for today. Any other questions? Please open the voting.
Voting is open.
Next up is Finance Committee, Mr. Grzebek.
We have 10 items tonight under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number one, the bill list for December 2022. Number two, budgetary transfers. Number three, the approval of Act One opt-out resolution. Number four, the approval of Resolution Number 16 TAC 2022. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve Resolution Number 16 TAC 2022 regarding Act 57 of 2022. Number five, items declared unused and unnecessary cheerleader uniforms. Item number six, items declared unused and unnecessary football uniforms. Item number seven, purchase of marquee signs. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to authorize the purchase of marquee signs for the administration building at $29,113.50 and Independence Middle School at $10,878.04 from the Co-Stars vendor Fast Signs at a total cost of $39,991.54. This will be paid from the Capital Reserve Fund. Number eight, approval of contracted school psychologist agreement. Number nine, payment for bus garage renovation project for a total of $105,682.50 to A1 Electric, Inc. Number 10, the disposal of a district vehicle.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Grzebek, seconded by Ms. Janasek. Is there any questions, concerns on these 10 items?
Yes. Could someone just explain for the public three and four, the Act One opt-out and the Resolution 16-2022, please, and thank you.
The Act One resolution merely allows the district to follow a more traditional path to approve its budget. By adopting the Act One opt-out resolution, you're simply saying you won't raise the mileage above the PDE index that is issued every September. And for Bethel Park, that's 4.8%. Rebecca, do you want to speak to the other one?
Is it number four that you asked about?
Act 57 waiver resolution.
Yes, I wish I had a copy in front of me, but it is for a tax resolution to waive or discount certain penalties when somebody did not receive timely notice. So that notice will go to our tax collector to keep on file once it is approved, if it is approved.
Prior to Act 57, if there was a mishandling of a tax bill that didn't get to a taxpayer, we didn't really have a methodology to relieve them of the penalty interest, and this allows us to do that if there was an administrative snafu.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you please speak to number seven, the purchase of marquee signs? I know there's a lot of discussion going on about what we're going to do with all of our buildings in future years with the elementary project, and I was just curious about if that was, you know, thought of for the purchase of a sign at the administration building.
I can address that. So right now, we have two marquees that we're asking the board to consider. The first one is a marquee for administration, and that one is mounted differently than a typical mount. This one is going to be surface mount with a footer underneath it with the bolts that can be removed and taken to a different location. The sign at IMS will be embedded into the part of the footer, so that one is not a movable sign. That one, however, will not be a sign that will have digital display. It'll just be pretty much, you know, here's IMS Middle School. The one at District will obviously have the opportunity to celebrate anything that's occurring in the K-12 school districts. So once again, if with our facilities plan, if we decide to go to a different location, that sign can go with us.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The last thing on the, I have a question on this, number eight, I actually think...
Yes. Number eight, a school psychologist that's currently on staff has a planned leave coming up. Dr. Shu has located a certified school psychologist that could step in to assist with evaluations on an as-needed basis while that individual is on leave. This individual would remain an independent contractor for the school district and would bill at a rate of $600 per multidisciplinary evaluation and would also be attending those follow-up meetings about the evaluation. So again, as needed, temporary basis.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything, Dr. Shu?
No, it's, the individual has, and I'm pretty sure it's already been approved, so is going on maternity leave. And the reason why that we're using this contract is because we could not find an actual substitute psychologist. So that's why we're adding it, and she's, will be acting in a role to cover a maternity leave through the remainder of the year.
And she's, this is through the remainder of June, correct? So she's, she will be the one that parent, if there is, parents would expect at the meeting, correct?
As long as it's a new multidisciplinary. We have some other accounts that we subcontract out through the AIU as well as gifted services. So we will continue to use those accounts. So many of the reports will go through her, though, as well.
Okay, that, I just want, more for the public, that, you know, there's going to be a new face around here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other concerns, questions? Please open the voting.
Voting is open.
Mr. Mojerak, can you take the Policy Committee for me tonight? I need a motion and a second. He moved it.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Mojerak, seconded by Mrs. Janasek. Any questions? Please open the voting.
Voting is open.
So while you're voting on that, there were two public reading, okay.
Motion carries.
There are two Policy Committee readings tonight, the second of three. Graduation requirements, we've gone through this in the past. It is just, I believe...
This is expanding the...
Pathways. No, no, this is expanding the opportunity for...
Post-grad, yes.
Post-grad.
Honor, honorary diploma.
And the second one is revisions to a policy, the first of three readings, 709.1, which is a school police officer, use of force and weapons, and 808, food services, which is that, I don't know.
So 709 is the policy. The board will remember, a few months ago, you approved the regulations, the administrative manual for the use of force by our school police officers. This is the policy that would direct from the board to the administration to follow those, to create and follow those guidelines. So we're kind of doing this in reverse, but you're approving the policy after you approved the guidelines. 808 Food Services, a recommended update from the Department of, our PSBA folks recommend an update on this policy.
Any questions, especially on the first read or the first one? There were only very minor changes on the food policy one. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Thomas Archer, 1012, Willow Glen Road. Colin Powell is well-known for his contributions to the military policy and for being the first black Secretary of State. But less is known about his early career. Stationed at Fort Benning as a junior officer from 1960 to 1962 before desegregation, he was prohibited from eating at restaurants and drinking a beer with his white comrades at local bars. A reasonable reaction to this would be to ask, why should I risk my life for the freedom of those who deny me mine? Instead, Colin Powell chose to serve with distinction and make great contributions to this great country. Most students won't learn anything about Colin Powell beyond maybe seeing a picture tucked away near the back of a history book where he's holding a white viol in front of the United Nations. They could with a CSL elective. For some reason, the social society's department decided that this was no longer a worthwhile course. Maybe they did, or maybe they concluded that the board is not committed to inclusion when they voted down this elective in the spring. The people of Bethel Park are committed to inclusion, though. 400 signs with the words Bethel Park Stronger Together have been distributed to and paid for by members of the community. These were distributed with very little effort. There was no hard push beyond a handful of Facebook posts. was no hard push beyond a handful of Facebook posts. These are being picked up in, by Republicans and Democrats, black, white, all across the board. Stronger Together t-shirts have even been sold by one of the local PTOs. The new silent majority is speaking, and it would be in the board's interest to open their ears. A strong gesture would be to indicate to the Social Studies Department that you are open to discussing this CSL elective and encourage its development. It would be at least as valuable as video game coding.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, I'd like to applaud our high school for starting an environmental club. It's nice to see the young people in our high school take an interest in the climate crisis and making Bethel Park a more sustainable place for the future. Also want to wish you all a very happy holiday, however you choose to celebrate it.
Yes, and I just wanted to say that I love the graphic that you're posting, Mr. Cromie, about all of the December events that are coming up. It looks beautiful. And there are so many events, so definitely check out the posts and the calendar and go see the chorus, or the orchestra, or the band, or all of it combined. Just go see all the things. There's so much happening in our schools. It's all very exciting. And I hope everyone enjoys their winter break and comes back home nice and refreshed, and gets to travel and do some things. Maybe we'll have a little bit of snow. And enjoy your time. Let's wrap up our first semester. Thanks.
Can you say semester anymore?
No, yes and no. I think I saw salt in one of the buildings today.
Yeah, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody out there. It's a great time of the year, especially in my household, and, and I'm sure in a lot of households, but keep those people in mind who aren't as fortunate. If you could provide any assistance to places like SHIM, even a neighbor who may not be seeking out assistance, but, but you understand their needs, step in and have a good time. Thank you.
Ladies first. If you choose. If not...
But you're all looking at me, so I have to. Have a wonderful holiday season, and I would ask that you remember everyone who's deployed over the holidays who can't make it home. One of my sons will be spending his first Christmas away in South Korea this year, and we'll miss him, but we are so proud of his service to our country. And for all of those who are serving, thank you, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas and all of those good things.
Same here. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone tonight. This has been a long night. Lots of talking on the administration's end for information. I encourage everybody to watch the Curriculum Committee tonight. Good information. We all learn. We'll make improvements to be best in class. I want to wish everyone a joyous holiday season. For those of you that have children serving or have family members serving, keep them in your thoughts over the next couple of weeks. It's going to be hard for them. And for those that have lost over the last couple of weeks, I know there are two board members up here, you know, please keep them in your thoughts as well as you move forward without those loved ones. So, thank you very much. Anything else? Second, moved by Ms. Hoppy, seconded by Mr. Modrak. Any objection?